We're going to call it order, the September 12th, 2018 workshop meeting, a regular meeting. Mr. Tindall will turn it over to you.
Good. Well, first up, I wanted to do an organizational update. You recall, we talked a few weeks ago about restructuring the organization's administrative staff, and we've took that in steps, and we've completed our last step yesterday. I think you got, should have gotten an email yesterday that talked about putting together the Internal Services Division and Paul Boyer being asked to lead that division. So with that, we've completed the reorganization that we laid out early on. I think next steps, we'll get the executive team together and some of the department heads together and create a value statement for the organization, one that's clear and defines our values as an organization. We know the customer service will be part of that, and striving for excellence in customer service and consistent improvement in that area is something that we're going to look for and be a value, a strong value of our organization. And with those principles, we can put together an organizational culture and build an organizational culture that will strive to set council's vision for the city in the future. I think in the future, we'll probably put together some meetings with council to help define the council's vision for the city. Over the next few months, we'll work on putting that together so the council can give us guidance and direction on the way we want to go. But at this point, as I said, organizational structure, I think, is put together. We are, have a basis for a pay plan that we think adds a lot of agility to the organization and is very market-focused so that we can assure that we can both hire and retain excellent workers. So we're looking at that. We're going to roll that out to our leadership team on Friday and do a little bit more work on that and get that in place as soon as we possibly can. So those are the things that we have organizationally that we're working on. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer those. Now, on the screen right now is the organizational chart as it exists now, and we will, we will work to evolve that into an organization that's structured for the future, that we can handle the city's growth and make sure that we handle it in a cost-effective manner. Yes, sir. You look like you have a question.
Could you please take that organizational chart and add some really good contact numbers and forward that to all the council members so that we can know we've got good up-to-date numbers so that we can communicate with people when we're out on the street and somebody says, hey, can you tell us who and what position they're in and how can I get in touch with them?
Yep. Good suggestion, yeah.
If this is, if this is a snapshot of our city government, which that, it is a snapshot, I, trying to see how I can say this, I, this, I don't see any diversity here in my, I mean, I don't see diversity in these top positions. I don't see anybody that really looks like me. I don't see any Mexicans, Asians, or Muslims. I don't see anything like that. So if this is a snapshot of our city, I just don't see any diversity.
Well, there's a couple of things in play. We didn't go outside to hire to create the new organization. We used a lot of our excellent resources, people that we had inside to develop our organizational structure as it is. It is, the snapshot is the way it looks right now. We do know that there are retirements that are coming up over the next few years in the organization that we can address. The other thing that we've had the conversation on diversity, and we are very much committed to improving the diversity of the organization and doing outreach, there are a couple of positions that I will bring back and talk to council about that we will go outside the organization and look for and have diversity as one of our guiding principles in looking at that and going out to hire the best possible person we can, all within that very important complex, concept. So those are some things that we are looking at. But as far as our leadership team that we put in place now, as I said, we wanted to use the talent that we had within the organization, and these are the individuals that really displayed the talent to lead the organization.
And I'm looking at the chart of people who possibly can move up in these various departments, and I still don't see diversity there. But that's just me. I just don't see diversity.
Well, I think it is a goal to work for. Vice Mayor, certainly, it's a goal that we've identified and one that we want to work for in the future. I think it's very important, and so it's something that we will be committed to as we, as we grow the organization and look for the future.
All right, any other questions? All right, let's move to talk about CIP allocation.
Okay. A little more work for council to get deep in the weeds on, on, on our CIP. Talk a little bit about debt as well, city's debt as well. You have in front of you, and I sent it out last night, I don't know if it worked as well as I'd hoped, but we're going to pull it up here, and I'm hesitating, so I don't want to leave Jim hanging. Let me, let me, let me open it up.
I'll dance until the interactive spreadsheet returns here.
Yeah.
Really talking about a current situation that's very favorable to the city. There are two principal sources that provided about $6.1 million in funds to be allocated by city council to capital projects. We've promised to you all that... Our commitment to you all was that we would not internally choose how we were going to allocate capital funds, that we would bring that back to you for your consideration and approval. So that's the purpose of part one of today's meeting, is to explain to you about $6.1 million of funds we would like to repurpose into three different areas in the budget. Number one, some of the cuts made in the operating budgets of the general fund, particularly in capital, were severe. When I took the red pencil out, most of capital disappeared, including things that we have done routinely, setting up replacement funds for equipment. I think there is a need for the first part of this reallocation of dollars to go back into the operating budget of four departments to replace some of those cuts, recommending $881,500 to be reinstated to Parks and Rec, Fire and Rescue, Police, and Street to replace some of those cuts that in hindsight probably were a little severe in terms of keeping their ongoing operations efficient and effective. None of those purchases, yeah, there was some concern, I think, about us perhaps cutting our nose off to spite our face with those capital cuts. This, I think, restores in those areas the ability to go forward and keep the same kind of operating efficiencies we have now.
Hey, Jim, before we get too far in that, so we're talking about one-time dollars, putting back into ongoing dollars?
Yes, sir.
Or are we talking about one-time going into one-time?
I think these were continuing capital dollars that were in your operating budget that we reduced and cut back on in the particular budget year we're in today. So what we're saying is, we're probably reinstating these with the eye towards them being ongoing capital investments. Most of this is equipment of one variety or another.
Okay. Yeah, okay. All right.
There are two projects that we're aware of that either have no funding or are short of funding. The next round of physical improvements to City Hall, creating some additional space for people to work out of, we didn't budget that anywhere. Don't know the exact numbers. We're still waiting for architects' plans, but we've asked you to put in $300,000 towards this next round of renovations on City Hall. The other project is, is much more important, and that's the pool at Patterson Park. We continue, since day number one, to have had humidity problems in that area around the pool. It's causing corrosion on stainless steel elements in the pool. Our recommendation is to put back another half a million dollars into that project with the $560,000 presently there to do two things. Go find a true expert on indoor pools and look for them to design a recommendation for how to solve those humidity problems. We brought, this has been through the process once, and we bid out a plan to try to solve the humidity concerns. I don't think anyone was satisfied with it. We had very little confidence in the design. Bids were way, way, way over budget. Bids were over $850,000 for a design we weren't sure about, and so we just stopped. We still have the problem, so we need to go forward, but we first think we have to go forward and find a consultant who understands indoor pools and the humidity problems in indoor pools. Then hopefully, we've got enough funding with now, if you all approve this, a little over a million dollars to resolve those issues with the humidity at Patterson Park Indoor Pool. Any questions about those two projects? And I'll move on to the third reallocation. And that really blends into the exercise that we showed to you yesterday and are going to ask you to complete today.
Do we have any recourse on the people who designed the pool the way they did in the first place? I mean, is that something, I mean, I know that's a long time ago with Patterson Park.
Patterson's 15 years old. I doubt there's any kind of legal recourse we can go back on.
I guess what I'm just asking is, looking forward, especially with whatever we do now, if we knew there was issues from day one, like you said, then, you know, day, day 365, we should have already been dealing with, taking care of who, who set it up the way they did in the first place, because I'm guessing we paid them to do it. When we're looking at going forward, I mean, you know, is there going to be some sort of warranty with whatever we spend to make sure that we're going to get what we're asking for?
Yeah, most times we'll have a warranty period. The contractor will give a year warranty period. You can buy additional periods of time, and equipment has its own period. The manufacturer will offer, you know, various warranty periods and things like that. 15 years, you know, nobody...
I get that. I'm saying for what we're doing today...
Yeah, for projects we're doing now.
The improvements in the equipment, there would be warranties on. The design is another matter.
Yeah, and I think it's a design issue.
Patterson's is like most indoor pools with that huge glass wall. It has a different set of environment problems with all that glass and the heat exchange in that glass day in and day out. I don't know if we'll find any engineer familiar with indoor pools in the world who's going to guarantee that their recommendation is going to work. Now, will they make the best recommendation they can? Absolutely. But will they guarantee that the money we spend to fix it is the solution? I'm not sure.
But, but if your point is that to watch buildings as we build them now and make sure that we're picking up warranty issues that we have and/or extending warranties where we need them, we are doing that, and our, our owners reps that we've hired on our projects have really helped us out in that. So the police building, for example, we've identified issues that we're watching during the warranty period, and then there was one issue that we actually asked, that was corrected, but we asked for an extended warranty period on. So we are doing a much better job of watching those on our, on our current buildings.
What about, since all that sun does come in through those windows, is there any kind of tent mechanism we can put in place? You know, I know sometimes when places have a lot of glass, they have some kind of tent to protect and won't let as much heat in.
Yeah.
Is that something we would, would be more feasible than to turn around and have to maybe help? Because it seems like it's a nature problem and not particularly anyone's problem. It's the location of where the pool is compared to where the sun comes in. Can we maybe look at something like that?
I'll, I'll flip this one to Nate Williams. Nate's our resident pool expert. The answer, the quick answer is probably no. The shades will not solve this humidity problem that exists in the Patterson indoor area.
I think what we're looking at is working with Councilman Hunsaker, who's leading engineer for pools, and figure out really a comprehensive solution. There's HVAC and dehumidification problem, that's one thing, but we need more of a comprehensive. There's different things we can do from like a filter media. What we're looking at is potentially working with the engineer who designed Ensworth's adatorium, so we can keep the temperature of the pool up to around 85, 86 degrees and also limit the humidity. But that's what they'll be doing, is working with Councilman Hunsaker, who designs these pool areas, to see whether other things besides just HVAC and dehumidification we can do to help fix some of the issues that we've had since day one.
My, my concern is that, you know, you don't think, we hire a consultant and they give us an opinion as to what needs to be done. There's no warranty on what their suggestions are? We're going to invest...
I'm not aware of any validity or warranty on professional recommendations.
In this particular circumstance, I think the company we're going to be targeting to work with, they have a lot of expertise. And then also working with another company in the field that's been doing this for a long time, has designed the Sportscom Outdoor Pool. They're, they do just this type of HVAC work. It's just for indoor pools.
We're recommending the best folks in the business that we are aware of, and that's the only assurance that I think we have is that the reputation of these folks at the tech pool have been in the business a long time.
At this point, we don't have any guesstimate as to what the cost of their...
Actually, they've done that on the process.
The conversation, and I've had some pretty extensive conversations with a guy who I consider an expert in air circulation. Guy's name's Mark Plunkett. He lives in Murfreesboro, Tennessee, and he, he works for a company called Big Ass Fans. And, sorry about the name of his company, but that's the name of it. And, but the, but they put units in at the University of Florida, University of Auburn. I think they have some at MTSU, but in my conversations with him, he said it was rarely the HVAC system. It's generally lack of circulation, and, and it's the moving of the air that prevents the condensation on your windows and on your surfaces.
That's one big part of it. Right now, we effectively have no HVAC in that room, though, that whole system.
Okay, so there's no system whatsoever?
There's no, it's blowing air, but it's not, it's not conditioning the air. There's literally a hole in the roof where it's supposed to be, and we're just blowing air through. From our preliminary discussions, we're learning that how it was originally designed to take it around was a design that they were using in the early 90s to mid 90s, and they've decided now that's not good, especially for our environment. So we've really done a lot of research and figured out who might be the best to work with, and we've had good, you know, experiences with these companies. So I think we have to trust that expertise, but get the right design on the front end.
All I want to say is Mark Plunkett lives in Murfreesboro, and he absolutely has designed multiple systems for, I know he did the University of Auburn, I know he did the University of Florida's aquatic centers. He did, I think he's worked on MTSU's aquatic center, and I haven't heard them complaining at all, which I don't expect them to call me when they have a mold problem or a humidity problem, but, but he knows how to deal with the situation. So it, I think it'd be worth picking up the phone and calling and talking.
Absolutely. Pools are inherently complicated because of the chloramine issues and other factors that come in. It's not just humidity, there's chemicals, there's, there's a lot of things that come into play, and it's just something we just...
From the conversation with him, it's more, more so the chlorines and the back sales and stuff that put a gas off on the top of the surface of the water. If you move that gas and you prevent the accumulation of it, then you eliminate a lot of the problems that we seem to be experiencing, so.
Like I said, we, we've worked with Councilman Hunsaker, who's really the leaders in the industry. We've had a lot of success with them. What they're going to do is take a look at our whole system to figure out what else besides just dehumidification and then HVAC would help us. I think, like I said, filter media, maybe tenting windows, all of those things, they're going to take a look at and see what we might be able to do to make it as comfortable and safe as we can.
Tinning existing thermal pane windows is an extremely dangerous situation to get into because when you put the tinning on it, it makes the windows darker. And when you make the windows darker, they absorb more heat, which causes the gas inside, and the windows actually explode. So, you know, seek with caution. I'll take it that when you start tenting windows.
Overall, last year, I think we replaced the slide. I can't remember how much that, I think it was...
$147,000.
And then we've replaced several different things in there, so hopefully we can figure out something to do, because the longer that we wait, the more that things deteriorate inside that, that pool area.
I think that's our main concern right now, is we have made a significant investment with the slide, and it's just, like you said, declining at a rapid pace because of the environment, and we don't have any, effectively no HVAC or dehumidification right now.
And I mean, most, most professional contracts, I know we dealt with several of those, whether it be an architect or an engineer, there's not much recourse on anything that, as far as whether something will, if, if there's recourse on architects, I would like to know that, because I have sorely messed up over the last 20 years, so.
We're basing this off of experience and then other work. I know Ensworth has had tremendous success with their indoor adatorium, and that's something we'd stem a lot of this off of. They have good references, and I think it's something that's going to be an investment to get it done right, but I think it's an investment we need to make.
Any questions for Nate? You'll have to come back with a, a contract. So, I mean, we're just really...
Absolutely. Recommendation on the engineering company, and then because of the size of it, it'll have to be bid.
Absolutely.
Go through the full bidding process.
We, I've been in preliminary discussions with, with the engineering firm, but I have a few more questions that we need to get answered before we come back to you with that proposal.
So we're not going, we won't have a motion for any of this stuff as far as putting you guys on a path to get, hire an engineer, anything like that, or you just...
Not hiring an engineer, but yes, we would like you all to allocate the money so that we can move forward with these kind of plans.
So Ronnie, with this CIP, we're really just putting a place marker in, saying that we still have to sign off on any contract, any engineering agreement, any construction agreement. We're really just putting a placeholder in to say we're committed with moving forward with the, the process.
Do we need a motion to sort of reset what we voted on, on the CIP, or is it...
Actually, these dollars weren't in the CIP.
We're using the bond.
These dollars have come in outside of the CIP. So this is your original allocation of most of this money.
All right. Okay. All right.
So to recap, three purposes for these dollars that came in outside of the CIP process. Number one, restore about $880,000 to the operating budget of four departments. Number two, about $800,000 allocation to the last, the next set of renovations in City Hall and to Patterson Park Indoor Pool. And then our recommendation on the balance of the money, $4.4 million, is to apply that to your forward-looking 2019 bond issue. If you remember from the operating budget, we resolved the operating budget on the backs of a capital plan of $60 million in new debt. And this interactive exercise that you'll go through next, I think you'll find it very challenging. You hold to only $60 million of new debt. This at least gives you a $4.4 million cushion, if you will, in your decision-making and priority setting on the 2019 bond issue. In the, in the re-proposed CIP, there's $91.7 million of projects, and so your goal would be to reduce that. If you think of the 4.4 going towards your next allocation, you've got to reduce that 91.7 to 64.4 million.
Okay.
We've made some suggestions on how to do that, but we really thought it would be fun. Craig did the work in terms of setting up this interactive spreadsheet so that you could discuss, do what-ifs, and talk about where the top priorities are in your capital projects to the 2019 bond issue.
Yeah. Another question, this may be Melissa. I don't know if this is a, Jim, you may be able to answer this.
Craig, this, for every million dollars of ongoing expenses that we incur, what, what impact would that have? I guess there's two ways, you could do this either way, but how many debt dollars would, would debt service, would create a million dollars' worth of debt service? So, I mean, if we, if we bring on $10 million of debt, does that, does that create a million dollars a year of debt service? What, what does that number look like?
That, that's the easiest ratio to use is 10 to 1. That's a conservative ratio. We will always be better than 10 to 1, but just for ease of thinking, 10 to 1 is the ratio we use in establishing initial thoughts about capital.
Yeah.
We're at 15 years, so that's about right.
Yeah. I thought that's about right, and I guess, you know, it's sort of as we're going into this conversation, the part of the, you know, and part of what, you know, I'm trying to think towards is if we're, if we're picking up $800,000 of, of ongoing expenses, if, you know, the reason I asked the question earlier, if that is real, ongoing-type expenses like part-time labor, full-time labor, whatever, well, that's $8 million worth of debt, we also need to cut off the 60. You see, if...
If, if you did that.
Yeah, if, if, if that was what it was, that's kind of why I was asking. And so, I mean, you know, I know there's some things coming up that we're going, might have some, some of those types of expenses, and, and, you know, just for last budget purposes to think through this a little bit, you know, when the schools, when, when the school budget ends up being a million and a half dollars more than what we kind of expected, quote-unquote, well, that's $15 million of debt service impact as far as what our, you know, when we're, when we thought about what our CIP was the prior year.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So every million bucks that we get surprised by state legislature or school system or whatever it is, $10 million, we got to carve off of debt to make the numbers net out, a zero, you know, zero sum.
Yeah, conceptually, you're right. You know, we have, we have three debt policies for the city, and one of them speaks to that. One of them is, is a percentage versus our operating budget, and that would go to, you know, the effect of our debt service and what it would have on the budget. I would tell you that as, as a policy, we're not close to. I mean, we are way below what that policy would dictate where we should be. So, so we have plenty of capacity in there. That's not the one that's really constraining us. But as a concept, you're right. Every time, you know, we, we go out to debt, it does, you know, we have to service it.
Yeah, I'm not talking about any of our ratios or our policies. I'm just talking about the revenue that we have to pay our bills is less.
When we, when we do debt, yeah, and so...
It's less when we have extra expenses.
Right.
When we have extra expenses, that's less debt that we should be incurring because we can't pay for it.
Yeah.
That's all, I mean, I...
To add to that concept, just to expand the concept, I mean, what, what we want to do debt for, which is why we do it only on capital projects, is for long-term projects that we wouldn't want to do on, you know, on a, we wouldn't want to save just to do that, because you'd never probably get to that point to do it. So, so you don't do operating expenses with debt, and we don't. We do long-term capital projects that...
Right.
You know, we wouldn't be able to do otherwise on that. So there's, there is a balance there, absolutely.
Mr. Crumley, Jim, when the council voted on the budget this year earlier, when we talked about the reductions in the departments...
Yes.
That was to get away, that was to move away from relying upon the fund balance to balance operating budget.
Yes, sir.
And we're talking about adding back some of those dollars?
The $881,500, we would add back to the operating budget. It won't affect what comes from fund balance current year...
Right.
Since we're bringing it from these new funds that we received. It would be an impact factor going forward.
And how does that change the plan of trying to move away from reliance upon the general fund over that three-year period?
I don't think it does. All along, I think we've said we need two to three years of really strict budget discipline along with what we've anticipated for revenue growth to get to a zero number required from fund balance into the operating budget. I don't see this as a unachievable factor. I don't see it taking away from that two- to three-year promise to get there. There may be other things that crop up. You've sat in this morning on the pension committee. There may be other things that come up that make it more challenging to, to get back to that zero number, but I don't think this will. I think it's important to keep those operating efficiencies in your day-to-day functions. At the end of the day, it's the ability to keep the garbage up, keep police cars and fire trucks on the street, keep those pieces of equipment being efficient as we go forward. And this 881 is really designed to do that. It's not, it's not intended to get us to a new place. It's really intended to keep us efficient and going forward.
And, and with the remaining dollars that we're talking about using forward-looking for the CIP expense, are there, are there places in the debt service where we have opportunities where those could be reduced to free cash flow from reductions with those dollars instead of advancing on forward, based on the current debt schedule of the city? for the CIP expense, are there, are there places in the debt service where we have opportunities where those could be reduced to free cash flow from reductions with those dollars instead of advancing on forward based on the current debt schedule of the city?
I, I think we've got real opportunity with discipline. And again, uh, that's the word we used a lot during this budget process. We enforced a discipline on departments that was tough. Uh, we weren't used to having so many questions asked about what we'd routinely spent year over year. Uh, I don't think we can let go of that discipline for a couple of years until we achieve that goal of zero coming out of the, the general fund balance. Uh, debt service is going to be an interesting part of how we get there. There are opportunities in the debt service schedule, but there are also needs in terms of new capital. Uh, it's going to be a balancing act for city council and for our administrative staff to look at what we recommend as going forward. We're the 10th fastest-growing city in America. There are things you've got to do.
Sure.
Uh, and that discipline of trying to get us to that goal of nothing from fund balance in about three years.
And I, and I know it's a challenge, you know, as we're borrowing, our borrowing cost increase versus some of the borrowing costs we have historically, um, you know, there'll be a temptation to say, let's not increase the debt on a higher borrowing rate than, and retire lower borrowing rates. But at the same time, in my mind, you know, reducing old debt and facing new debt based on new challenges makes some sense. Uh, so I just, I just make that comment for the good of the group. So, yeah.
This is really our first attempt at a, an interactive exercise on gaining your priorities. Not sure exactly how we go forward from here. Uh, we, we've made a staff recommendation to you in terms of how, uh, best thoughts we had from the administrative team would achieve that $64 million goal. Uh, but we'd also like for you all to be aware of and discuss any of the priorities that you see differently from what we have placed in here. Uh, there may be projects that are on your mind that we have not got on this list at all, and this is certainly an opportunity to open that up for discussion.
Starting on administration, um, is that okay if we go down each individual one?
That's as good as.
Logically, yeah.
We've talked about this, the, the, the money that you've got allocated for, for the Franklin Synergy project, is that for, what is that?
Craig and I talked about that yesterday morning. Uh, that was our initial thought was we're going to need something to spur one of the redevelopment areas, be that Franklin Synergy, be that the Bottoms, be that Highland Avenue, be that the New Gateway. There's, there's a good need for that somewhere. Uh, but then we also talked about, there, there's no immediate concrete need for any of this. Uh, a better recommendation from staff may be remove this from your bond issue and be prepared to spend something from fund balance for those investments in redeveloping downtown, redeveloping Highland Avenue, looking for a new gateway.
I mean, I would rather, this is my opinion, but I would rather use, I mean, that's why we have the fund balance to be able to, if there's projects like that, that we need to help stimulate, but I, I would rather not borrow money to be able to do that. Um, you know, the, the initial thought on Franklin Synergy was really to get our money back on that piece of property, the 1.5, which hopefully we'll get back sooner than later with the, with the development agreement going through, hopefully, maybe.
Well, yeah. We're, and we continue to work on that. We're, we're waiting for responses right now from the, uh, one of the developers that we've been talking with, so.
I've been in contact this week and just inquired their status update on that.
But now, I mean, you know, that, that, that 2 million, if we're talking about improving infrastructure downtown, you know, if that, if that, we've already redone a bunch of the streets and sewer lines, but, you know, my opinion, that's really for tangi, tangible things. So I, I would recommend holding that and if we need.
We just don't have concrete plans yet. So I agree with you that this, this is where if we have to move quickly, use fund balance.
Okay. Does anyone have any issues with the ADA renovations or the Franklin Synergy?
No.
Okay.
Can you give us an update where we are on the Franklin Synergy building?
As Adam mentioned, we've had some dialogue with them this week and, and we're waiting to, to hear back from them. They have documents. Um, last I heard, and correct me if I'm wrong, Adam, last I heard they were still arranging their financing. It's a mixed-use development, so financing is, is tricky. Um, and they were still working on that. So, uh, that's the last update we had. And I know Adam's corresponded with the attorney to, to see if we can get, get things moving further and, and quicker than they have been. Just a, so the, the question, I guess, on Franklin Synergy, if, if I heard you right, Mayor, your suggestion, I didn't hear anybody else comment on it, but, um, do we want to move then the 2 million off of the CIP or, I mean, the other, the other option could be to, um, to take that money or some part of that money and to put it into the Historic Bottoms Highland redevelopment area. And right now, until we know more on Franklin Synergies, to leave that at zero. So we could go to 3 million on Highlands Historic Bottoms, um, and just to recognize that as an economic development generally for those areas, or, or less than that. We could do another million down there and take a million out. I mean, that's, that's the other way we can certainly do it.
I would be fine with moving a million of it down to the Historic Bottoms, uh, for redevelopment down there and, uh, eliminating the 2 million dollars that we currently have. And if the need arises, then we would resort to fund balance.
Okay.
It gives you the opportunity to redevelop, and we've talked about South Front Street, um, realigning that, that light that desperately needs to be, to be done.
We need a light up front and broad to spur that area down there.
Desperately needs to be done and, and I don't think a lot of the stimulus that will come, will not come unless that intersection is developed. So I, I think that needs to be a priority.
And council members, we did, just as we talk about that historic, now, uh, or the, the bottoms, Nate and Angela and I had the opportunity, I think it was week before last, we, we did a, a Greenway sort of riding tour, uh, of that whole area, including the Bottoms area. Inspector Gadget. Uh, so we, we, we rode that whole area to look at some of the opportunities that are down there right now and some of the issues that are, that are occurring, that are going to make it tough for economic development until we get some of those, those, um, in check. I mean, just to be honest, even us down there, there is driving through on a golf cart, there are areas where there's some safety concerns. And I know our police have been working on it, but, um, that's something that, that we'll have to overall look at safety when we're looking at that, that renovation, so.
Just prior to our meeting, we, we met, uh, Police Parks and, um, and I met with, uh, to talk about the issues that you're talking about and the initiatives that are in place right now that we're starting to implement and will be ongoing to try and manage some of that, those situations.
Jim, the only thing I say in this that really would like y'all to think about overall, and this would be a discussion for the council maybe moving forward, you know, as we drive that, and we're talking about allocating money, long-term, the use of the West Main, um, trash facility.
Yes.
And where we currently have our street department, you know, 50 years ago, that location was probably okay because it was away from where the downtown is somewhat. But now, as we talk about redevelopment, you know, having a, a dump in the middle of town in our street department that backs up to the Greenway, you know, our, our, our team does as good a job as they can when you've got trucks coming in and out and heavy equipment. But, you know, when you walk down the Greenway, we've got our opportunities that we need to fix, being a neighbor as well backing up. So, you know, as we look at that, long-term, we're going to have to find some better locations for those services to not be where they are with the transit, transit facility being built, the bottoms being developed. You know, we're not very centrally located to where those services need to, need to be.
We agree, Mayor. That's, that's a, an excellent goal for us to begin the search for a, we're, we're confined by space at Main Street. Uh, we're growing out of that space pretty quickly.
Okay.
Space and higher invest use. And Mr. Riddick was instrumental in designing that facility over there. So a lot of that can be moved. It has underground tanks and that canopy can, can be moved. So there's, there's some things that have been thought about before that would help in, in doing that.
All right. How about, we'll move to airport. Did you get clear?
Well, let's see. So, so we're at.
That's what I was.
2 million on, on redevelopment for Bottoms and, and Highland renovation, zero at Franklin Synergy and 300 at, um, the ADA improvements.
Did, did you say 2 million for Bottoms Highland?
Somebody said two.
Was it 1 million?
Yeah.
Total of 2.
Total of 2. So that gives us.
1 million to 2 million there.
So you get another million to work with as we drop, go down the line. Oops.
So we keeping that additional.
Too many.
Million on Franklin Synergy.
No, we'll go to 0 on Franklin Synergy.
Are we working off the stack? Is that right, the direction column or?
Well, we'll end up.
Council direction.
Council direction column.
Well, I understand it's separate, they can zero off the funding business.
Yeah.
The bonds.
Yeah.
Whether it was 1 or 2.
Yeah. And, and we really saw those as one project redevelopment, whether you call it Bottoms, Highland, New Gateway, uh, Franklin Synergy, whatever title we put on it, we saw those dollars as interchangeable in the redevelopment world.
So that we still have the million at Franklin? Or we just going to hold off and see what we're going to do with that?
My recommendation would be to hold off right now and not put anything there. And if we, if we needed to, we'd go back and, and look at fund balance, bring it back to council and discuss fund balance.
So we have a million floating right now?
You of.
So we took a million and put it on the Bottoms, right?
Relative to our staff recommendations, you've gained a million.
Okay.
And our recommendation is 0.
Yeah. Jim rolls down to the bottom. If this works right, if it doesn't work right, it's an operator problem, not a design problem. I'll just say that. But if, if you go down to the bottom, you'll, you'll see the total is it.
If I scroll down, it will give us a total and, and where we stand as we get to the bottom.
So right now, you got 62, 100.
Well, it really, did it change anything because you took the 2 million?
62, 100.
Should be 63, 407.
Be 63. We've only removed 1 million.
Right.
You took a mil, you took 2.
62 million to go.
You just moved it. You just.
We're going to take big chunks out of that in a hurry when we get to schools.
All right. You just took this, this 2 million.
Airport, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Um, and Chad is here to speak to these at any length you'd like for him to. We're recommending $2 million for the South Apron redevelopment. That is a revenue-producing change that.
Jim, hold on one second.
Yeah.
Up there that you've got, I think what we, we were talking about is Franklin Synergy goes to 0, which you have.
Yes.
And then Historic Bottoms should be 1, not 2.
That 1 million.
My question was, are we 1 or 2?
Otherwise.
Is that what you said?
Yeah.
I said, I said 2.
Oh, so you said, you said.
I was moving a million, uh, down and preserving.
Wouldn't move a million down.
That's going to keep everything the same.
If you go from 2 million on Franklin.
We can, we can put in whatever number in this, a what-if, we can change it as easy as that.
Well.
And moving the 2 million.
And it will change the totals for us.
Yeah.
What was 2 million went to 0 and what was nothing.
Yeah. So, but we're, we're at 1 million on Historic Bottoms.
The original CIP had 3 million between the two projects. You all are recommending keeping that at 1 million.
So that the ease of the design concept has fallen apart. So we're working off, not of staff recommendations, but it's, but it's a total project.
Basically not funding Franklin Synergy and funding Bottoms.
This is the number that it's working on.
Okay.
Uh, the 2 billion dollars for the South Apron redevelopment actually is a revenue-generating project that removes the old Quonset Hut and then establishes new box hangers for rent. And we have tenants looking for those new box hangers. The airport terminal, what you don't see is there's 4.35 million dollars already appropriated in the 2018 bond issue for the airport terminal. Uh, the staff recommendation was to add a million dollars to that to make that number 5.35. There is still the real estate, uh, out on Memorial across Airport Road from the Walmart that our intentions would be to sell, put back on the tax rolls and use whatever proceeds from that sale towards the terminal project. So, uh, we think we've got a total number to work towards of about 6.3 million dollars.
All right. So that would be funding 2 million and 1 million?
2 million and 1 million.
Okay. Street?
I've got to figure out how to make that say 1 million there.
Hey, so can we just type in 1 million?
Jim and Craig, can we, for our benefit as a group, or is the, is the, is the overarching deal, what, what's getting ready to happen here, that we want to make a run through this and kind of see where it gets to? And then if we need to make a second run, we'll make a second run? I mean, is that, is that what we want with this?
It's really.
This thing is completely interactive. We put in the numbers, we'll tell you where we need to get to when we get to the bottom.
I feel like we're.
We can adjust as needed.
I feel like we're in, discussing outside agencies like we do in budget. So, we're going line item by line item is where we are.
Oh, my goodness.
We would highly recommend to you the equipment in the street department.
Hey, I, I didn't, uh, say this at the very first, but I looked over and want to recognize someone. Sally Smith is, stand up. Adam, Adam, do you want to introduce your?
Sure. Sally Smith is a senior at Central Magnet School and she is shadowing me today as part of her, uh, law course at Central Magnet. And so we welcome her to this meeting and, uh, we'll be, uh, she and I will be meeting afterwards to discuss everything and have a debriefing of it.
Sally, we're glad.
Talk about you.
We're glad you're here. And we want to, we really sympathize with her because her dad is Fant Smith and that is tough on Sally. So, yeah. All right, Jim, sorry.
No problem, Mayor. Uh, we'd recommend to you the street department stay as it is. We come to fire and rescue. Three projects there. Air packs, Engine 10, and the beginning of funding for the reconstruction of Station 3 at Hobgood.
Hobgood.
Um, there was some conversation between Chief and I earlier that we may want to substitute a Station 12 on Joby Jackson for the Station 3 reconstruction, but the dollar figures would be the same. So, uh, that may come back to you at a later point in time.
So let's, um, we, we've already funded Station 11, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. And that was in the last, last.
That's, that's been done.
If, if we are going to say Fire Station 3 reconstruction, I would clearly want to go ahead and, and you think that we may take that to Fire Station 12?
Depending upon activity that we see on Joby Jackson, 12 may step in front of rebuilding number 3.
You know, I, I would highly recommend or ask, let's label that Fire Station 3 or Fire Station 12.
Sure.
Because I, I don't want, based on some of the other things that we're, we're dealing with, I don't want to give the, in, the inference that we're promising a station on 3 and we're going to switch that to 12. So let's just say Fire Station 3 or Fire Station 12.
We wouldn't bait Fire Station 3 into thinking something?
I'm not saying a word.
Good man.
So that way, if we decide to do that, it's clearly Fire Station 3 or Fire Station 12.
So to, to.
What's Fire Engine 10? It should be self-explanatory. Make sure I understand what.
It's.
The latter.
Fire Station number 10.
Fire Engine, Engine number 10?
That's just a replacement, basically that placeholder on being number 10 is something that's going to come out of the old CIP. This is essentially a quint apparatus that would be placed at Station 12, Joby Jackson.
We're buying equipment for 12 before we have 12?
Well, yeah. I mean, it'll, it'll replace one of our other apparatus and then we'll roll, Station 12 is not going to have the volume. So this, this quint would actually replace what is now Ladder 9 in the scheme of things. And then we would push Ladder 9 down to probably the Joby Jackson station, whenever that station opens.
We got 2 and 1/2 million dollars and looks, I mean, it looks like the air packs are something we obviously probably want to do for the safety of the guys. But, I mean, to me, that, the 2 million that's left between Engine 10 and, and then the reconstruction is something that maybe could be pushed back a year if we just have to. I don't know, that's, I don't know if there's a year, a day, a time critical.
Oh, no, I marked the wrong one.
What would, uh, if we were to defer Engine 10 for a year, what would happen?
Well, it, it would get us off of our replacement schedule. Those, those trucks are by. Well, it would get us off of our replacement schedule. Those trucks by National Fire Protection Association standards have to be replaced within a timeframe. And that would, essentially, we've got these trucks scheduled out through CIP to be replaced to where we're rolling them off as they would go. And of course, with moving Engine One out of Station One, we avoided having to purchase a new truck to place in Station Eleven. Whenever it comes out, we will be pulling that engine out of Station One, moving that company out to staff or to be placed at Station Eleven. So we don't have to purchase a new truck for that, for that facility. But this would put us a year behind. And as we got into discussion on Station Twelve, the biggest reason we did not build at Joby Jackson and built at Blaze Drive is when I came to you and gave you the run data, we were looking at an eight to one call ratio difference in that, the Blackman area of responses that we had at Joby Jackson. That's not to say that we do not need a company at Joby Jackson. And the way that Joby Jackson is developing out and with it taken upwards of a year between planning, design, everything else to get a station built and get it there, I would highly recommend that we push Station Twelve forward to get that area staffed. We have multiple businesses out there, heavy industry. We've got the Maple subdivision.
We are able to, I mean, when we annex Maple subdivision and all that, you know, your guys said that we could, we could take care of that with what we have. All right? I mean, you know, that's what the plan of services said is we can take care of it. So I guess, I understand that there's more growth coming and all that kinda stuff. But, you know, look, at some point or another, we probably all need to have a little bit of a discussion and led by you.
Yes.
That talks about the whole ISO ratings and what we were wanting to try to get to and what really the council direction is on that. And what price are we willing to pay to try to be a Level One? And what benefit does that get the city? I mean, because I know some of these response times and these recirculation times with these engines and all that kinda stuff is all based around those ISO ratings, as I understand them. So, you know, look, if we can be on a thirteen-year rotation and keep an ISO Two versus we're trying to be on a ten-year rotation just to get to an ISO One, I mean, we probably need to be involved in a decision on whether or not we're trying to achieve an ISO One or not. I guess, that's a different discussion, but.
And the truck recommendation is not based on that. It's based on serviceable life of the trucks and NFPA's recommendation on those and the safety factors that are developed over time. It has nothing, ISO doesn't really look at the age of the truck. They recommend that you follow NFPA practices, but it doesn't really count against you.
I mean, if we got a truck that's in good shade, I mean, are we gonna get rid of it just because the standard recommendation that's supposed to be really brought?
Well, we keep trucks a very long time. I mean, we've got them over twenty years. And so by the time we're getting rid of those apparatus, they are, they need to be gotten rid of and not be, not be run on emergency calls within our city. But the biggest thing on, the biggest thing on Joby Jackson is not as much on having, not, having a station at Joby Jackson will not affect us that much on ISO rating. It's not that. Because most of the properties that are out there, the industrial style properties have built-in fire protection in place. It's a matter of us being able to provide prompt response times. And with the apartment complexes that have developed, you know, when we annexed the Maples, those apartment complexes were not there on Elam Farms Road. And much of the development that's been out there along Joby Jackson corridor has not been there. And with the increased traffic that that's creating increases our response times to those areas as well. So, you know, we, what we did on stations, as we placed those stations, we actually placed where we were building a replacement station, building a new station, building a replacement station, building a new station so that we could offset the amount of personnel that we were having to hire. My, within every year, not having to hire new personnel every year. With us receiving the SAFER grant, we will be able to leverage some of those positions from the SAFER grant to open Station Twelve. So we will not have to hire all fifteen positions to be able to open Station Twelve. It will be much less than that. So it kinda puts us in a position to move Station, Station Twelve at Joby Jackson in front of a replacement station at Station Three.
The grant's only temporary. We're gonna have to be paying for those people eventually, right?
Yes, and that's why those, that leveraging of that staff to open Station Twelve is my recommendation that adheres with the policies of the grant that will enable us to open that station without hiring that many personnel, the full amount of personnel.
Time on that engine delivery now when you order?
A year. Yeah, it takes approximately a year. We can actually build a station if we get started on the station faster than we can have a fire truck built. It takes about a year to get a new truck built. And by the time, if we start on a station, it takes around ten months, nine to ten months on a station once it starts. But that's after the design process and everything goes through the, that we need to have there.
Chief, while you're talking about the grant, it was what, two point six, two point eight?
It's two point eight, four million dollars.
Two point eight, four million. The, and it pays eighty percent the first two years and thirty percent.
Pays seventy-five percent the first two years of all salary and benefits and it pays thirty-five percent the third year.
Okay.
And then those salaries are on us.
Okay. So roughly, it's almost a million dollars a year overall expense to get those twenty-seven employees that you're looking for.
Yes.
So in year four from now, we've added a million dollars for every year forward to justify taking that grant.
Yes.
Well, in year four, it's three million dollars, two point eight plus raises.
Yeah, but it's a million dollars a year plus the three million dollars covers three years. So it's a million dollars a year.
But again, we would be able to leverage nine of those positions.
Three years from now.
Again, we would be able to leverage nine of those positions. You know, we're opening Station Eleven without hiring any additional staff. We're moving Engine One out of Station One and opening Station Eleven without hiring the fifteen that we would normally have to hire to open a station. And so this, with the, with us receiving this grant, we'll be able to leverage about nine of those positions toward the fifteen that we will need to open Station Twelve on Joby Jackson.
In other words, with Station Eleven opening up, we were gonna have to hire those, those.
We would have had to hire those fifteen, yes.
Anyway, so.
And apparently fifteen would be about a half million dollars if twenty-seven's a million.
About fifty-five thousand dollars per entry level fire hunter salary plus ten.
Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
True, thanks.
All right. Are any other questions on fire?
Well, all right, so we, the eight hundred thousand, we keep. The million two stays this year?
Okay, councilmembers nod to.
Run here, yeah.
All right. And then the five hundred thousand?
Whether that's the new Station Twelve or the rebuild of Station Three, we've been staggering all of the new construction. If you remember in the CIP, we had four stations, two rebuild, two new, staggered rebuild, new, rebuild, new, so we could deal with payroll costs. Those are gonna be the prototype stations at an estimated two point seven million dollars each. We'll get a real true look at what the prototype station costs when Station Eleven bids next month?
Yeah, the very first week of October.
Station Eleven will bid the very first week of October.
And I think it's important that we continue to pursue the ISO One rating. But, but having said that, it only generates or actually saves taxpayers from the people we represent on a residential home. It's only about a one to three percent improvement with an ISO, from an ISO Two to an ISO One. I think from the commercial standpoint, it's significantly more. It's five to eight percent, is that correct? Somewhere in that ballpark, savings on their insurance. So, so there is a savings there, especially on the commercial side and when you're trying to attract businesses. I think that's where that ISO One rating becomes more important, more so for new businesses trying to attract them and this is where your insurance rate's gonna be because the coverage is so good. So, so I do think it's important that we continue to pursue that rating, not from the residential standpoint, but definitely from the commercial standpoint.
I agree. I was in a, another thing, I was in a review yesterday with an audit and it was a class, they're classifying, you know, from the banking side, what you're classified as a one or a two. And it was interesting to hear the analogy come across that, yeah, you probably can get to a one, but it's gonna be so expensive to get to a one. What's the, what's the benefit to do that? So that'll be something, I mean, two, two is phenomenal.
And I won't put words in chief's mouth, really the gap that we had to get to one was the training facility, which just happens to be the next item on the Capitol list.
Let's move to police.
Without the training facility, it would've been very difficult for us to get to a one. We're recommending three million for public safety training facility. The other items in there are normal replacements of existing equipment. You don't think about how much technology we're packing into public safety vehicles now. Cameras, radio systems, computer systems, those numbers on the technology replacements are simply an annual replacement type cost. Same for public safety software, same for your patrol vehicles, both marked and unmarked. Ideally, in the long run, we get out of having to borrow money for these and are able to work these back into the operating budget because they are normal costs, with the exception of the training center itself.
Any questions on police?
I listened to an interesting conversation on the radio this morning between some gentlemen that called in and the mayor about having police cars sitting outside the schools. And the guy seemed to indicate that he felt that it would be more advantageous to the city to use old junky police cars outside the schools than the latest technology equipment that's available to us. And I'm kinda like, somewhere in there, he had missed the point that those old vehicles were new vehicles at one time and had just gotten that way through use. And it, so, I think it's important that we continue to try our very best to fund the safety needs to protect those police officers and firefighters in every opportunity we get.
My comment too, Eddie, was after I thought about it more, that if the worst thing in the world that we have to complain about is a police officer having a nice car parked out in front of a school protecting our kids, then we're in a really good place to.
We are that.
Going on in the community, so. Okay.
Parks and Rec. The projects Cannonsburg through Oakland are continuing improvement and maintenance on our existing facilities. We've made huge investments in public parks in our city. Those investments require periodic refreshing and refurbishment. Nate, unless you know something different, most of those are exactly in that category of refreshing and refurbishing existing parks. The money you see at the Jordan Farm complex is the public restroom that goes along with the practice facility there, a little different, new enhancement there. We did not recommend in our staff proposal either the improvements at Old Fort or the improvements at Blackman Park. Part of it is gonna be, when you get to the mathematics at the bottom of the page, there's maybe not a place to put these two projects. And no amount of tinkering that I did, could I make the numbers work without the elimination of Blackman Park from this year's CIP.
And I wanna make sure, Jim, we had this discussion, you know, we, a few of us were out at the community meeting and, you know, we talked about how things had changed from even May to June when we had these budget discussions. But even in our CIP plan that y'all had presented at our budget hearings, that number that you were looking to plug in was even over like a three-year number. It was like two thousand twenty-one, possibly be able to get something open if that was correct, isn't it?
It is, Mayor.
Because I think first year it was like one point nine million is what had, had been looked to borrow.
Over, over a three-year period, we had twenty-seven million dollars in the CIP you looked at in December of last year. And that was a ten and a twelve and a five. And that was the phasing that we thought, A, matched up with construction and B, how we fit future years into the financial ratios in our policies. There was some parts of both of that in dividing Blackman Park over three years. The initial year was probably gonna be rough grading and a few improvements on top of that. But, and this was when we were talking about the cost potentially being twenty-seven million dollars, not thirty-seven to forty million dollars. So, yes, it was phased over at least a three-year period.
Okay. Any questions on Parks and Rec?
Nate, what was the three point eight five million dollars that was proposed? What was that going to be used for on the Old Fort improvements?
The Old Fort improvements, resetting the road. Nate, you probably remember that better than I do.
Sorry.
Is this the redesign of the entrance and the redesign of the?
Redesign of the entrance, the rewriting of the roadway in that main intersection, the replacement and changes made to the pavilion structures that are there, the support that goes around, the restoration of Spring Branch that is in the middle part of the park, and the changes made to the parking and community amenities outside of the outdoor tennis area.
Master plan improvements for Old Fort.
I guess with some of the changes that we're looking at with the restructuring of the departments as well and a maintenance building and stuff being out there in that area, that probably makes sense. As much as I would like to see the entrance improved and stuff, I think it might make sense until everything is settled and we know exactly where, what these buildings and stuff are going to be used to, is pavilions as well, what the demand for me is. I think delaying this really does make sense and as much as I would like to see that entrance changed, I agree with the staff's recommendation that we should probably hold back on those.
Thank you.
Okay, schools?
I'll catch up to you here. I can talk while I'm hitting the Xs on these so that our totals look right when we get to the bottom of the page. Obviously, we are committed on the thirty-two million dollar construction of St. Andrews Road School. School bus garage, we've got some good news, I think, to report. On Friday of last week, Lisa Nolan delivered to Melissa a five point three million dollar check, which was the city school's share of the county's new elementary school and the other improvements that they bond financed for the elementaries. We believe we can safely take the school bus garage out of our CIP and explain to schools, that's now part of your five point three million dollars. I think we also say to them that any cost overruns beyond the thirty-two million we have in the CIP for St. Andrews needs to come from that five point three million dollars also. Melissa's calculations are we're three hundred thousand or more short at the thirty-two million dollar limit.
I think we're pretty close for construction, but we don't have anything for any furnishings, libraries, vans, supplies, nothing.
We probably, we probably will go back to school and say the finishing touches, the furniture and the other equipment going into the school is coming from your pockets.
Jim, does that check that comes, does that go straight to the city of Murfreesboro? Does that go to the school system?
I have. We have an account called County Share Bonds and I'm the one who writes the checks out of it.
But who, who makes the determination on how that's, that's spent?
Well, normally each year, if we kinda discuss it, back in the day, Mr. Haley wanted to use it for debt service payments and we did do that. Here lately, the schools have been coming with more and more capital outlay needs. And so they have a list that they've been presenting to council and we've tried to find what we can out of that. They've chosen the priorities off the list that they give you at budget time saying, we pay for these items. This year, we did not, I don't wanna give any indication that we would pay for their items. So I think, I think that recommendation is instead to use that money for the garage and for finishing on the interior of the school for furnishings.
But in the reason, you know, knowing that we, we're bringing on, just say, if you figure a million per, per ten.
Yes.
We're bringing on three point five million in debt service for the school.
Yes.
We added another one point five million to. We added another 1.5 million to the, to the operating budget to be able to supplement. And so, that's, will more than likely be 1.5 million here on out.
We've done some analysis, and when you look at both the direct contribution from the general fund to schools of a little over $6 million now, plus the debt service that we presently have on schools, total support from the general fund to schools was over $13 million in the current year. You're exactly right, Mayor. That adds 3.2 million roughly, so that number would go to over $16 million.
Which is about 10%.
19, 20 here.
That's almost 10% of our overall budget.
Yes, sir.
So, I think what I'm, what I was thinking is that that money that, that money that comes back is, is based on our share of the amount of students that we educate inside the city of Murfreesboro. I would think that that 5.3, if we know we're having to borrow 33 or 32, plus we know what could go over, and the FFNE costs that you'll have inside of the school, and a bus garage, we may have to look at, that 5 million that we could use towards this school will save us 500,000 in operating interest carry. So, it seems like we'd use that first and then see what else may would come after that.
That's an option, Mayor. If you remember when schools presented their budget, school bus garage was in our CIP, recommended to you at that point in time. And then, don't hold me to this number without having the school's proposal in front of us. I think they had 1.7 million of additional capital that they requested from city. Everything from school buses to playground replacements. And they had, at that point in time, they had no source of funding for those items. We made the recommendation to you all to apply the additional million dollars of continuing funding to schools, but we did not make a recommendation of going forward with those capital requests.
There's no doubt.
Every year, almost every year, the county is going to be faced with having to either expand or build an elementary school. So, it's not continuing income, but in a way, it has been a regular income. Our 15% of what the county spends on elementary-only education. County excludes all their middle schools and all their high schools from that calculation. It's only the elementary component.
Well, I mean, you know, the 5.3 that comes back to us is, is a pale comparison to the 16 million that's in our budget that we're spending, so. But, I went over and met with Ms. Jordan, and she toured me in the city school bus facility, and there is no doubt that something is going to have to be done in that facility. But, we need to really look overall to see what that existing piece of property is worth, and if there is a user out there that we know someone may buy that at the same time that we're doing something else.
I think our own transportation department may have ideas about how to use the existing school bus garage. That's pretty much the path of a continuation of Middle Tennessee Boulevard through to Old Fort, to Memorial. Yes. I think, I think our transportation department has dibs on that.
It's usually the way it works. All right. So, 32 million for the school, but we also have the 5.3. Do we know what it cost us to outfit Overall Creek?
I don't remember. I think it was short of a million dollars. I want to say it was in the 800,000 dollar range, but I'm not sure.
I guess, and I hate to keep talking, I just don't want us to say, look, we've got this 5.3 million dollars, let's find something to spend it on. If we don't, if we don't, if we don't need to spend it, I mean, I would rather us say, look, we got 5.3, we know we're going to need a million for finishings. If we weren't going to do the bus garage, then that means that that's 4.2 million less, and we would have to borrow to do that to this school.
Melissa is correct. The check is written from county to the city of Murfreesboro. I think it is you all's job to allocate those dollars. If we go back to school and say, we'll pick up 32 on St. Andrews, from there on, you will bring back to us how you intend to use or not use that 5.3 million, whether that's a garage, whether that's furnishing out, covering the balance of St. Andrews, whether that's playground replacement. I think that's totally appropriate to have schools bring back a proposal on how to use those funds to you, the governing body, and you all decide on the use of those funds. I think they come to us without any real strings attached. I don't think there's any prerequisite that those dollars have to go back to schools.
It has the big use for schools.
I think that's been our practice, but I don't think...
No, it has the big use for schools.
It must be. Melissa, correct me, it must be for schools.
But we have, we have debt service on school buildings that we can pay with that. That would free other money to...
And that 5.3 that's sitting there after we fit the school, that gives us, I mean, can we, Melissa, can we use that for ongoing debt service in our operating budget to be able to pay for?
We have done that with the new rules. I'll have to check, make sure, because that might look like you're using debt to pay debt, and I'm not sure if that's allowed.
Okay.
I'd have to check on the bond, because these are actually, this is actually bond money.
Sure. Okay. Counsel, y'all have an opinion on what you, what you, what you think?
Jim, the total project cost is listed as 33 million, but we're talking about 32, both staff recommendation and 2019. What's the difference in those two?
I think, I think the 5.3 million was our solution to anything in excess of 32. And when we use the 32 million number, that includes the cost of roadways and other utilities going into the site. That's the site development costs and the construction costs. Those are hard numbers now that we know what they are. I think when Melissa totals those up, I think that's when we come to like 32 and a quarter million. So, we're saying the balance of this is on schools. We recommend that that 5.3 million be the use, be the source.
I agree. Jim, I'm hearing that we should just hold that, that excess funds, and then if we need, we'll listen to recommendations coming back from the school, school system on what we may need. But, you know, we know that, we know that we got 32 million that's coming, plus we got to fit the school. So, we know there's 32 million reasons that we can spend that, that 5.2 on right there.
Right.
But just because we've got that extra doesn't mean we need to bring on other stuff to try to spend it, so if that, that makes sense.
So, we'll, we'll extend, we'll hang on to the 5.3, use whatever's required to finish out Overall Creek, and then we'll take proposals on the balance of those funds.
I mean, that, you know, we, we went through, I would, it took us so much work to find existing land for an existing school that, you know, I'm not saying what we're going to do in the future, but it would be nice to have something set aside that we don't have to borrow, that if we need to have those improvements, that we almost have a, I don't want to say a slush fund, but a rainy day fund for the school system. If somebody comes in and they say, look, we need to replace this roof, we can't afford to do it, we've got something there to be able to do that.
The first one, this has been useful. In fact, last year, we, we did interiors, we rubberized at least two playgrounds. They had to do some technology improvements to glue the black parts.
Well, and Melissa, it won't be long, it won't be long. We purchased computers, we purchased 5.2 million worth of computers four years ago. It won't be long before that comes, comes back up again.
Five million shows up in your five-year life expectancy, so it's there.
It was there, it was there this year, and they decided not to afford with it.
The 5 billion appears in the 2020 CIP.
Well, that, I mean, we've got 5 million right there that we may be able to pay cash.
Well, part of it, I, I think we're still going to do the furnishings of the school, but this 30, I didn't realize the 33, the 32 used to be 33, so he's right, we are short. Because I was working for 33 when I said in the interim. But we do have the rest of the interior to get that out.
Okay. Solid waste.
Why do we back that back to 32, why was it?
I'm not sure. That number has bounced around. I think the last time we said it, which was in December, we were still at 33. I think that, I'm not sure why that number got to 32. Probably my keyboarding.
Well, that's an expensive mistype.
Just one digit off, right? Solid waste, the 540,000 is replacement equipment on a regular schedule. You know, you may want to rethink the 160,000 for the recycling center with the changes recommended in your approval of those at the annual budget. Investing additional income, additional money at that site may not be recommended right now.
I would suggest we move the 160,000 for the recycling center improvements.
Stay in or go away?
Go away.
Go away.
I just don't think with the future of that place that we need to continue to invest into it with, I mean, some of the equipment will probably be transferable, but until we know what we need and where we're going to put it, I think...
We own very little at the recycling center. All the boxes belong to Republic.
Really, we, we spent some money several, several years ago, Dodd, I think Construction did it, where we basically just put new concrete down and new fencing, but that was about all we've done.
More than 10 years ago.
Yeah.
I took a computer monitor over to have it thrown away, I guess, or whatever, I was getting rid of it.
Charged.
Had to hand the guy a $10 bill, I guess.
Haley Road.
Yeah, Haley Road, to give him my computer monitor, which still worked, by the way, but wasn't good enough for my seventh grade, my ninth grade. Anyway, the point came to me that, you know, when, if we have some sort of a, and I know we're working on a big picture waste management scenario with the, with the landfill, we had, you know, a pretty good little dialogue about the recycling center, and sort of there were some reasons for doing what we did that I think made a lot of sense, you know, just real common sense kinds of solutions. Is there a, you know, I still would like to make sure that there's some dialogue within our staff and within our body here that, you know, that we are trying to have some sort of an option, and whether or not that's a, that's a, you know, combining with the county, or whether or not that's giving it off to the county or something. You know, the whole, the whole situation with our West Main, I think, is flawed. You know, I mean, it's just not where that ultimately needs to be. It's the, it's not the right size, we have the wrong contract. I mean, you know, all those things are, make that not a very, you know, closing at 8:30, two days a week. I mean, none of that stuff is how it should be. I do want to make sure that we've got somewhere along the lines that we're continuing to have some sort of conversation on what is viable. And look, I'm, I'm going to put it out on the table right now as it relates to recycling. The reason I brought up having to pay somebody to give them my, my computer monitor is, you know, maybe the way the framework that that needs to be set up is if we're going to have a recycling center that, you know, you want to pay to come recycle your stuff, okay. I mean, you know, I mean, where it's a, where, if people want to be able to have a place to bring, to recycle, if we're, if we're having to provide that service of getting it somewhere and selling it, maybe you just pay for it when you dump it off, just like I did with my, my computer monitor. Because the fact of matter is, we're having to pay somebody to get rid of the glass anyway, and we're having to pay somebody to get rid of the cardboard with the grease on it, you know, the pizza grease on it. I mean, same principle is intact, right? They got to pay to get rid of the monitors, we got to pay to get rid of that stuff, too. It's not like you can go sell it anymore and make a ton of money. I mean, it's, it doesn't work like that anymore.
Like, that's the biggest education need is that there are no markets today for so much of what we recycle. We're actually paying to take it away.
I guess the point I'm trying to get at is, I still want to make sure that we're having some discussion about offering the service. And I know we're talking about it in the bigger picture as far as curbside pickup and all that, but as far as a convenience center, and whether that means the county does it or we do it, or some combination of that, I would like to continue some of that discussion. But even if it's a pay-to, pay-to-play kind of scenario.
There's just, there's this, and part of it's education, but there's this misconception that we have shut down West Main, which it was already being shut down already because we don't have any control over when the stuff is picked up. So, when it was full at 8 o'clock, we'd have to shut it down. So, I think the misconception is that we shut it down when I think, in actuality, if you look at the amount of hours that it's open right now, it's probably open more than what it was open because it was getting shut down. But, you know, we get, we're getting blamed, we don't pick, we have no control over when anything's picked up there, correct?
We, we don't pay to have the dumpsters or the roll-off containers picked up. That is a service that Republic provides at no charge to the city. They typically will prioritize their routes to get paying customers first, which means our boxes often are full. When they're full, we have no place else to put any of the garbage or recycling material, and we close the gates. We could become a paid customer of Republic and probably change those cycles, but it, it almost runs counter if you're trying to, you're now paying to have somebody pick up the dumpster boxes where once they were free. So, I, it's a, you know, customer service versus cost, and it's a, it's clear that it's a very popular service that people want to use. I don't think they understand the costs that are associated with it.
I guess my point is, if they're getting charged, what, what we're getting charged, everybody will understand a little bit more, we're not making money on the deal. I'm not saying make money on the deal, I'm just saying recoup the expense.
The county collects glass at its recycling centers. They may change that policy in the near future. The glass that they collect at their recycling centers is hauled to Rivergate Mall area north of Nashville, and then they pay $44 a ton to hand off that glass to someone else. So, it's, it's, I don't think folks understand that the markets for recycled materials are not developed, there aren't places for this to go, and you even achieve a break-even status. It is a costly service.
All right, anyway, sorry, I got off topic a little bit there. We're moving on, sorry.
All right.
Transit Center, we recommend that. This is our 10% for the beginning phases of a new transit center.
Okay. Transportation?
And you probably ought to look at roads as a whole, not as any particular one. We'll make a couple of recommendations.
Let me give you a quick status.
See what the total is?
Well, we're...
You want the surprise to end?
You need to...
We've got 14 million to go.
Well, you need to find, yeah, you need to find 9.5, you need to reduce 9.5 from the list that's under current projects, so.
And I may ask Chris Griffith to help me here. Projects that were underway, I tried to continue the funding for. Projects that had not started were still in design, I didn't try to put any funding in. There are dollars sitting in current bond issues for some of these projects. For instance, Cherry Lane, obviously two very large numbers. There's 1.6 million currently available in the bank for Cherry Lane, continuing the planning and organizing for that effort. These dollars, we, again, I could not find a mathematical solution where I could make the numbers work without excluding Cherry Lane. Or one of the other significant road projects. I think we've made a commitment on Caroline Farms for that half million there, I think council has. Mercury Boulevard sidewalks, again, that is a multiplier that we take 160,000 and make 1.6 out of it, and sidewalks on Mercury.
Hey, Jim, just for a little quick clarification on Caroline Farms?
Yes, sir.
That, part of that, oh, I see what it is. Okay, all right, yep, sorry. Does that get us all the way to Cherry Lane?
That 4.5, Chris, does that take you from Thompson to Cherry Lane? There's a piece missing in there, isn't there?
We have that in two parts. The first part was a...
The development.
...partnership in the back of NTSU, and then there was a very significant gap between...
Miller Coliseum to Cherry Lane.
To Cherry Lane. And so, what we had projected in there was a single project to take us to Cherry Lane, so that should be the single project.
Your, your 4.5 million total is, I think, Thompson Lane to Cherry Lane. The half million here is basically to meet our commitment to Caroline Farms and the partnership.
Got you. Yeah, I figured this where it was, okay.
So, if you, if you were to look at our list, and if you were to look at what the council recommendations were under roadways, and so, and match it to what we recommended for staff recommendations, you would still have... staff recommendations, you would still have 1.1 million to, to get to the 64.4 million that you could, that you could put into projects. So I guess the easiest way to do it is, if you wanted to focus on roadways, is if there's 1.1 million of addition to staff's recommendation, you could put it in there or some other project above it.
Yeah, you go, go back and think from the very beginning in terms of where we started with redevelopment dollars that we don't have a specific target for today. You've done a great job, that we've got 1.1 million dollars yet to put back in. As smarter people than I have said, you don't borrow money that you don't need, and if you're happy with this set of projects, instead of at the 64.4 million, you're at actually 63 point, 63 million, 250,000 dollars.
All right. Melissa, I hate to keep going back to this, but if we know, if, if we don't have the, the 5.3 that we got coming back, so that, that 5.3 is based upon what, again, what we would have to spend, or the county would have to spend if they were building our percentage.
15% of the county's bonded costs of elementary school construction.
So we've probably already spent that money on, if it's overall Creek, or, I mean, we've, so, does it make sense if we don't know what that money is going to be spent for? If we know that we're gonna have to buy furnishings and fixtures for overall Creek, but instead of having that money that technically is already bonded money that is basically borrowed money that the county has borrowed, that they're giving to us, but we've already borrowed the money that they would have had to borrow?
Possible.
Why would we not just take that money off of our bottom line? And then if new things need to come forward for proposals, then that would be on next year CIP as opposed to having to, you know, borrow another $3 million, then if, if, instead of having that, that borrowed money that the county's paying interest over that they gave to us, then we'll go through the CIP process again if there's new projects that need to come, to come forward on next year CIP.
If, if, and, and just for ease of math, if we're 1 million underfunded on, on the new St. Andrews School, use that 4.3 to make $33 million total funding for St. Andrews, be 28.7 million dollars.
Right. So, so then, if, if, if the, instead of that money sitting here that somebody's paying interest on, the county, I mean, we're paying interest on it because we're county residents.
County property taxes, we're paying.
If, if the, if the school board needs to make different recommendations, then it goes through the CIP process, and instead of borrowing 64 million, we're only borrowing 60 million.
Yes.
And, and that saves us on our operating budget, you know, half a million dollars in, in debt service that we wouldn't be, or $300,000 in debt service that we wouldn't be paying.
And you gotta remember, we're.
You can spend that school, that money on, that's fine. Part of that money, if we're going to pay for the furnishings and the library and all the things to make it on key, that's not in this, in this plan.
We would need to do a little work to get to a complete number for St. Andrews School. We're currently at a 90% number for St. Andrews.
You're absolutely welcome to use part of that money to build the school. That's fine.
I mean, if that's what we got the money for, in, in, instead of having this false, hey, we got 4 million here to bring whatever projects that want to come forward, which means we're gonna get $4 million worth of projects presented to us, whether they need to be done or not, we got 32 million that we can just take and put that money towards, and then when the projects want to come forward, we can look at them and say, yeah, we can afford to do it, or we can't afford to do it.
I think, I think we're already to the point.
We know the answer to that question.
Yeah. We have a construction budget. I mean, we can go back and look at the construction budget now, and I don't know if they budgeted out FFNE, but most, some of them will. Some of the FFNE will be in there unless it changes. So we should be pretty close to knowing what that number's gonna be, and then we can reduce to 32 to, to match that. So, in other words, we take our construction budget, put FFNE in it, subtract out five point, whatever we got, and then just use that number to, to put into our CIP for the year.
Between bid and sidewalk, not bid and roads or utilities, yeah.
So we still have some gray areas, but the concept of using the county shared bonds towards over, towards St. Andrews School, we understand that concept.
That 33 million included.
So it's raw land?
That wasn't.
Yeah, well, it's an estimate.
Yes, but I meant it was included in the budget.
Yeah, we build the building, so we know.
So can we do this? Maybe if y'all will come back to us as we finalize this and say, here's what the over, here's what we estimate the overall, the overall project will be. Here's building construction, here's land, here's site work and utilities, here's what we're gonna need for, for furniture fixtures and equipment for the school, here's what that total is. We subtract what we've got, that 5.3, that gives us the number that we need to borrow, and we're set.
Since, since this is what if at this point in time, let's just say that there's 4 million to be applied after whatever other costs there are, and that we're at 28 million borrowed plus the county's shared money for St. Andrews School, you come down and that puts your total just under, just a little over 59 million dollars.
There we go.
Would, but would you still need to back off another 4 million that we're carrying forward?
Yes, because we're allocating that first.
That's, that's first, that's the first thing, okay.
The 4,400,000 is cash on hand that was really unpredicted from the 2018 bond issue. That's real cash on hand. That was included in the 64.4 million. You've got capacity, I guess is the right way to phrase that, when you've got projects to fill that capacity.
And the Front Street project is in the historic bonds, it's not on transportation?
It, it's not a specific item in this particular CIP. It may be something that you all want to talk about including.
It, it hasn't been designed.
Million dollars that you left in there for redevelopment.
Right.
That's what I was gonna say.
Yeah.
We could just take that and say, that's what we're using to, it's actually a realignment of vine in front, a sequel.
Yeah.
Hey Jim?
Yes, sir.
Make sure I'm, so the, I may not understood the question, but just trying to get an idea of what amount of money are we talking about borrowing?
Yes.
Coming year? That's, that's, that's the ultimate end goal of the spreadsheet, right?
Yes.
So we were at 60 million of borrowing. The total.
Budgeted for 60 million.
Yeah, so this is 64 million because that's a 4 million carry forward.
Yes, sir.
Right, so we're at 60 million, but now if we're gonna back off the 4 million from the schools, aren't we at 56?
I think you're at 55, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we got another million off the top line, we got a million plus.
You've got the 4.4 that's in the bank from the 2018 bonds, you've got 59 million proposed of new borrowing, you're at 55.
55, not 59.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, what did we, what did we budget as far as interest carry in our operating budget for this year?
We budgeted one interest, and I think that's all we could use for the operating budget, on 60 million that we proposed. Yeah, we only, we only budgeted one interest rate.
And maybe not.
Yeah. We were gonna wait, we knew we were gonna wait till after January so that there would be nothing or even just one payment in the next bond.
Can we make it that long, based on our current school, expenditures?
I don't know, because it, I haven't, we've got our first.
Something happened.
Okay.
Oh, maybe.
Little wise, we probably should be okay because property taxes are gonna be upon us in the next 30 days, so.
That's a good, that's a good plan.
I think we'd always planned, we'd always planned, I think, on being out in the bond markets sometime in January was kind of the goal, I think.
One of the things I want to make sure.
Interest rates have improved over the last 45 to 60 days, so.
Well, one of the things I want to make sure we're looking at, I mean, ultimately on this thing, is how are we gonna pay for it? So, so even though it, you know, we've been focused today on going from 91 to 60 or to 55, or whatever the number we can get to it, you know, we're talking at 55 million, five and a half million dollars more of expenses per year on our debt service. If we're not expecting our revenues to grow by 5 million, which I'd say that's probably about, that's probably about the number, if I had to guess, what, it would be our estimated revenue increase this year, as far as what we expectation, I'm not saying what it will be, I'm saying like an expectation would probably be in that neighborhood. So, you know, we've pretty much wiped, wiped that out. The whole reason for me to ask the question as far as the debt service number and the, and the expense number, you know, we, we also got to remember, this is kind of a two-phase situation where we got, if, if, you know, we're called back to Jim's conversations about the pay issues and trying to get those things situated like we think they need to be, that was also a two or three-year process. And, and I think the comment was something like, still got a lot of work to do. If, if that's another, you know, million bucks of additional dollars that need to go into payroll benefits, whatever, pension, I mean, whatever that number is, I mean, that's another $10 million that we just effectively added back into this from a yearly, you know, from a yearly budget standpoint, what the same, you know, the same effect of adding $10 million of debt would been. So we just.
Good news and bad news.
We need to, we need to make sure we're at the net number, okay? I mean, the, the net number is what can we pay for?
Good news, debt service, if we do nothing, decreases by 4.6 million dollars in the next fiscal year. So what you've talked about doing at 55 million is not quite a wash, but close.
So it adds a million?
Say a million. In our development of the pay plan, I think we've found that the $2 million that you all appropriated in the current year goes a lot further towards meeting a decent goal than we originally had thought. I think we've prepared you to be maybe two years of having significant additional money going into the pay plan. We've still got a little ways to go, but I think we're a lot closer than we were. I'm not sure, I, I'm confident it will not take 2 million additional dollars beyond a good raise to get us to where we need to be with employees' pay. The unknown pension plan this morning.
Yeah.
Looks like we could add $1 million in annual cost to the pension plan. Health insurance, knock on wood, we've been so good the last two years, where historically we've been adding $1 million a year on healthcare. Last year's increase was only a couple hundred thousand dollars. So the unknowns are still out there, but I don't think, I don't think right now we've seen anything except the pension plan that we didn't expect, and I think we're still on an attainable goal of working our way out of that useful fund balance over a couple of years. Revenue growth, we're just into the new fiscal year. We haven't seen a lot of numbers, but assuming we're on track with our projections there, we shouldn't be far off.
Solid waste billing, we'll get that.
Solid waste billing, we've got to get.
After the first of the year, that'll help.
I think we also need to revisit the hotel motel tax. I think the time is, is now to go ahead and pursue that while the opportunity still presents itself, because the time may pass and we may not be even given access to that money. And currently, I know the county's getting double what we're getting, and it's simply because we chose not to. A lot of these projects that we're looking at here could be directly related to tourism, especially the parks and recreation projects. And so I, I, I think that, you know, if, if that's a revenue generator and it also helps us incur some of this expense that wouldn't be directly going back to the taxpayer or the ratepayer, I think that's something we need to look into pretty quickly.
Hey Jim?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, man, I can't see all this good enough. On that part, on the park.
Want me to read for you?
No, you got, you have a total on the Parks and Rec on what we still are gonna be spending on the, on the staff recommendations?
Yes, sir. I, I don't think we printed our totals out here, though.
No, hang on a second, I'll.
I can't tell.
I can get it total here.
I'd set his pants on fire with that.
Call it four and a half, around number four and a half million dollars.
Four and a half million dollars?
Yes, sir.
I think, I think it's probably important.
Most of that going into Greenway between Highway 99 and Barfield.
I think it's important to, to, you know, to note with all the discussions that are going on, too, is that, you know, there's, there seems to be, I don't know, it seems to be some need for clarity that, you know, we're still, you know, trying to be dedicated and committed to creating park space and maintaining park space, and, you know, there's a, there's a discussion going on right now, and it's a difficult one. But, I mean, four and a half million dollars this year, plus all the annual costs, is a, is a pretty substantial commitment level to Parks and Rec and the city. So I, I just felt the necessity pointed out.
Yeah, just to, to piggyback on that, you're right. And when, there is no discussion to decrease the amount of park space. The discussion really is centered on where, where it might be, but it's actually, the discussion's really to expand the available park space, so.
All right.
And, and just a point of clarification from my own mind, school bus garage. And right now, what we've done is we've reduced St. Andrews School by the total of the county shared money, and we did nothing with school bus garage.
I mean, I think if we're gonna do something with a school bus garage, we need to show that coming back through, you know, our CIP process to, to do that, because, you know, this.
We actually had 2.25 million in our proposed CIP to you last December for a school bus garage.
The, the issue we've got is going back to overall Creek, where we spent 22 or 23 million, no one knew that building the exact same school is gonna be, was gonna be 32, 33 million, and you're, you're, you're looking at a 40% or 30% increase in what the school costs over.
Some of that is land costs, some of that is site differences, but I'd have to pull the overall Creek construction contract to see if, I don't, I don't. Yeah, it's 24.3.
That's, that's just.
Yeah, which I, we, we were, we were overall project, now we partnered with Swanson to be able to, how we did that road, but, I mean, we were 24 million in overall Creek. It's hard to compare apples to apples, but.
Memory is always dangerous, the construction contract alone, overall Creek was right at 20 million dollars.
Yeah, we just have to be careful that everything that we're getting, there's not been a construction project that has come back in the last three or four years that has been close to really where we said, we, we put a placeholder in at, you know, we put a placeholder in at 20 million for, for West Park or Blackman Park at the time, and now we're, you know, we're doubled that, so, you know, we're really, if we say 2.2 for the bus garage, you know, we don't have a site identified yet, we don't know where we're gonna put that. So I think if you guys come back with something that you say, look, we found a piece of property, here's what we're gonna do, here's what we're gonna do with the existing piece of property, that's something the Council could absolutely look at, but putting placeholders in right now without really having defined plans of what those are gonna be, it's tough for us to be able to do that, because we just, we don't know what.
And we have between now and, and honestly, probably December, before we have to tie the numbers down for a bond issue.
Yeah, they need the bus garage, there's no doubt, but we need to make sure, really, there may be some discussions moving forward on how we fund things that we need to, we need to talk about sort of over, overall, because you bring on a new building at 2.2 million, then we've got maintenance costs now with the school system are gonna go up, which means that's passed right back to us, that we gotta figure out.
Additional employees required on their side.
How to find, so, yeah. Are there any other questions? Are y'all going to present this back to us on next Thursday night, or what's the plan?
I don't know if it'll be this Thursday night, it should, but it doesn't have to be quite that rushed.
It won't be this Thursday night, because we're not, we're not meeting, so next Thursday.
Not Thursday.
I think we got it to 55.
59.
Well, 59 in expenditures.
I took the four out.
55 in borrowing.
Oh, right, yeah, less than 4.4.
Right. 59 totaling expenditures, there's 54 in overall borrowing. 55 borrowing. Jim, if y'all could come back, the next, the next go-around, if you would come back on what those totals are, and then also if you would give us something to show what the, what that's gonna do to our operating budget, that'd, that'd be great as well.
I'd, I'd kind of sketched out in very, very general terms what a budget next year might look like. We can bring that back to you. I got about a third of the way through Capital Projects Report for you to look at, building on, first, the, the great work that Vicky Massey does on keeping track of our bond funds that are already involved in projects, but I know you all had said a, a beginning budget, kind of how much we've spent on it, how much we've got to go, so I'm, I'm down through. So I'm, I'm down through the street department. I've got a place to get it.
Council members, any other questions?
I have one other thing just for your consideration, and I talked about it, Craig, we can put it on next week's agenda. We do have a change order on the energy retrofit project. It is the closeout change order. It is actually a savings of fifty-five thousand dollars. We can bring it back and, and do it on the next regular agenda, or you can authorize the manager to save fifty-five thousand dollars.
I'll move for approval.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Rick made the motion, Bill seconded the motion. We voted in acclamation that everybody voted for it.
Five thousand, yeah.
Would you, would, would you put on the record?
I got some ideas.
Would you put on the record, Jim, that maybe after this, to explain to Mr. Griffith how a credit and a change order would work? That would be great. We've never seen one of those.
You know, it's funny how he gets those confused. I never see a change order with a reduction on it. It's always an addition.
All right, we'll stand adjourned.
We got another finger tube.
Yeah, we got it, we got a couple more things.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Melissa. Melissa, Melissa has a beer permit. Tuber.
Thank goodness. My favorite place, the Dog House.
It's going to reopen corporate.
Place is awesome.
Move for approval. Rick?
Rick?
Second.
Ronnie, second.
Last, Ms. Gelsairs?
Aye.
Mr. Leland?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shaffler?
Aye.
Mrs. Gubbin?
Aye.
Mr. Way?
Aye.
And Ms. Carlin?
Aye.
Mr. Shoto? Yes, we have one appointment for some expiring reappointments of Wayne Belt and Ted LaRoche to the Public Building Authority.
We, we need a motion.
Please.
Move for approval, second.
Rick, and Rick, motion eighty-second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Miss, everybody voted for it.
Excellent. One more thing. We have had an announcement of a retirement. Mr. Crumley has set a date when he will be leaving us, October the eleventh, unless we can make him stay through the end of the week. I think it's the middle of the week. I don't know why he did that, but-
Don't forget the selections. It's one month.
The actual, the actual date is in January, but the, the way we do with, with leave time and stuff, October eleventh would be my last working day.
Yeah, so, congratulations to Jim.
Congrats, man. That's cool.
With that, there, that's all I-
Jim, thank you so much for the presentation today. You did a great job with it, and thanks for getting this to the point.
Well, now, interactive pitch was all Craig. That skill, I do not have. I got to work on those.
We're, we're giving you credit for the good part.
Yeah.
Blaming him for the small type.
Small type. You should have saved that commuter.
That's what leaving and staying means.
Different string, leaving and staying.
It's better than what Mayor Bragg left with Disney song, I'm going to, you're going to miss me when I'm gone.
All right, we'll stand adjourned. All right.